These days, they're sorry.
The state is, if you do, you can't sort of establish a big amount of states picking up part of it. They're not really, um, they're picking up some of it, but I'm willing to bet this percentage up to a dollar a million. So like when you have, if there's all that, the kind of kids, if you basically were to cut fifteen percent off to this, um, you know, that, I mean, some of that, you know, I think it's too easy to do in the back of that seat. Like, you might have a penny back at the shares of, for other town students or those, I don't know, per se.
Okay, well, thank you.
Please, not in the associated, thank you, or government agency. There's something with the county itself, but we're just, I mean, so it's true.
Me, Jeremy.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Jones, Bill. There goes a time goodbye, we have.
All right. Gus, go some time goodbye fast. Yeah, bye. All right, let's call them in order. The public leaders, the two in the black of the United States of America, and two of the product of which stands one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so first thing we got up is the budget ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash seven. If I had a chance to look over the budget, and this is it, and it's, thank you. Uh, general funds. Seven hundred twelve thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars, local roads and streets, fifty-nine thousand eighty dollars. Motor vehicle highway, two hundred twelve thousand, five hundred eight, park fund, thirteen thousand. Human capital improvement, two eighty-six. Human capital development, seventy-eight thousand, one thirty-seven. Economic development, income tax, uh, ninety thousand. Anybody want to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven of the budget?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Next, uh, we need to open a public hearing for additional appropriations for the park resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
You all have done this a few times, I don't feel that you need the explanation, it's just another time where, finding that the town already has, uh, but that was not appropriated to be spent in twenty twenty-five. It will, if you approve this, be appropriated, in other words, you're freeing it up, you're unlocking it so it can be spent in this year rather than carrying it over into next year. Uh, but we're not imposing any additional tax, uh, you're, you're not borrowing money, it's money that the town had, but just did not appropriate to be spent this year.
Especially going for the cost with that, that grant we're applying for, DNR, we just have to put it up, every bit of this is in the grant, part of our, um, what is it, then we got to, anybody in the public got any questions, other, extra appropriation, additional appropriation? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody want to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, additional appropriations for the park?
I'll make a motion. Let's record it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to do the budget reduction, it's twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
And this is just the opposite. This is, this is money that was appropriated to be spent in twenty twenty-five, but you're not going to spend it, uh, which is a good problem to have. And so you're reducing the budget down to the amount that is the difference of what was appropriated, what was spent, and removing these funds from it. Still remain money of the town and available to be spent, um, in future years, and will, and this is in part funding your twenty twenty-six budget, right?
So shouldn't that say, uh, right there, top paragraph, there as, should it say spent in twenty twenty-six?
Uh, I'm sorry, say again?
Right there, where it says to make available those bonds to be spent in twenty twenty-six, right?
Uh, yeah, I see, I see what you're saying, uh, yeah, it certainly, it certainly shouldn't be twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And that's a state, good catch, Joe, the best producer of provision, provision.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, that change?
I'll make a motion that we approve this change.
Now second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
A sign for the town hall. We've got a quote here for additional signings on the town hall, would be two interior signs, uh, on the front, one on the rear. We've got a sign right there, uh, for the police department on the side entry. And it's for, uh, the lottery director, got a little list right there of all the signs he takes. Uh, they originally had priced this with the general contractor, but the drawing said that the signage on the building was, so I had to get us this price together. And, uh, this is pretty well, it, it's still in the budget, let's see, total three thousand nine hundred sixty-seven seventy-five. And that is for the seventeen inch by twenty, that should be seventeen foot, right there, I clarified that was, clearly it says seventeen inch. It's seventeen foot by twenty-four inch, uh, by six millimeter, laminated.
And these were taken from the blueprints, right, Joe?
Correct, correct. This is all the required signage for the, for the law, you know, the empty, like, the finished, everything together.
Do you know where this company is?
Oh. Thanks, yes. So, yeah. What, somewhere. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Right.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Twenty-five inch seven. That's going to be, uh, that's to appoint the appraisers, but that, that number's going to have to change, right? To what the budget twenty twenty-five.
This is the resolution.
Okay, that's, okay, that's the one, this is the resolution.
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to a couple people, and they was, uh, reluctant to do the letter because they didn't have enough experience with commercial work. So, you know, I don't know if we could, we got more time, I don't think, it's just a big hurry, that, uh, we can't try to maybe find somebody to do it a lot less. I think the lowest one we got's twelve hundred right now.
That, that wouldn't be too bad, but.
Okay, uh, once you clarify that, Timmy Lee, just a little bit better, who can do that, that letter?
The, the letter, what do you mean?
For the appraisers.
They, they appraise someone, they appraise, who can do it?
Yeah.
Well, uh, the, uh.
Does it have to be an appraiser?
No, the, so, well, yeah, uh, they must be professional appraisers licensed under chapter, any angle twenty-five, which is, which is real estate, which is.
Again, a real estate profession, legislation.
Or they can be employed in the town familiar with the value of property, which is really, I don't, it's a strange swing to say on the one hand, they have to have these credentials, or they don't have to have any, they just have to be somebody.
Yeah.
That's, you know, kind of upright, and, uh, you know something about working, and, okay, we've done that before. I guess my question to you is, i- if, you know, if, if, if Jewel and Stacy returned appraiser, appraisers on this property, we satisfied the statute.
Okay.
And you don't have to take what you, what's, what that appraisers, but we have to clear this first, and I guess, I don't, I don't know whether you want to get a, um, qualified appraiser or Realtor to have confidence when you consider offers, or whether we're just trying to get past this requirement, and we're going to put it on the market and see who offers what for it. Or be just to hand it over to an auctioneer, just so they take it.
So, if we get the appraisers in the process, is we just go ahead and put it up for the market? Now, are we required to take the average of those two appraisers as a, a minimum bid, or?
No.
Okay.
Uh, anyway, it's just on the sale, yeah, we can't, we, we can't take, we can't take less than ninety percent of the average.
Okay.
At less than ninety percent. Through, through, through the initial offering, if nobody buys it for that, then we can start offering it on an open market sale. But we, but we have to attempt to do it that way first.
Okay. All right, well, I think we get to clarify it a little bit better, all right?
So are town council members considered employees because we're elected?
Yeah, uh, employees, yeah, that's a good question, Jewel, I, I think so, for most purposes, they are.
Superdumb, too.
Yeah, but, um, you try to think, well, do you run any, any kind of conflict of interest or anything, and I don't see where.
I would, I can't do it, yeah.
I, I don't see where you would, well, why, why do you think you would run into a conflict?
Um, well, um, mainly because I sit this seat, and I'm a Realtor.
But you didn't.
But, but who I work with, we would rather not.
That's okay, it's okay you'd rather not, it's, it's just that a conflict exists when your interests are at odds with the best interest of the town. And they are, right? But you're, you're, you're sitting in that seat with the goal to get, to sell the property for the best return, to get the best price. You value it, it's not inconsistent with that, right? You're, it's not like if you assign a member, somehow you gain financially on the other side, so we really, it's really not a conflict issue, but I understand why it's something you all would want to do. And, and if, part of it would be not to be responsible for the result, that may be the subject of criticism later because somebody out there walking around thinks they know a lot more about it than before you do, and that you didn't get enough money for it.
That's really how I thought about it, I feel like at the council, I just kind of feel like.
I, I don't much like that myself, I mean, I, I guess if, if you were to ask, or if I had a vote, I, I would opt not to have the council members value the property.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I wouldn't, and I, and unless we have employees that really do have some experience or skill set in doing it, I wouldn't do that either.
The sad thing is, it's a lot of money to have it, and of course, that's taxpayers' dollars.
So we'll keep trying to find someone, I guess.
Yeah, we just, uh, we'll make a few more votes, uh, we'll bring it up. Everybody okay with that tagline? Okay. Newtown Hall and the park, Newtown Hall is moving along, uh, matter of fact, inspector's coming back over tomorrow to inspect electrical that's been fixed since the fire, and get them, uh, get the power turn back on, so we can get it, they're due to hang drywall Thursday, uh, which most of the wire that ran from the data got burnt, so I need to go and run the data wire again.
I'm going to take a purchase, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm going to buy in the box of wire, it's like a hundred and some dollars, five bucks or something, and, uh, to run that wire again, everybody will, uh, want to make a move.
I will, we got to do that, yeah, it's got to be done.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll get that put back in Wednesday. Uh, other than that, it's going pretty good, uh, I think, uh, maybe we'll get back on, on schedule, we got the truck fixed, and the inspector's going to see that tomorrow. Hopefully we can get all the drywall finished on, those, just, you know, well, back on the way, seen it at the front of it, looking pretty good, everybody seen that? Uh, the insurance on that, uh, you guys got a copy of that right here? Had a deductible of one thousand dollars, of course, we're going to have to add that, uh, and all my cost of it, they paid out twenty-seven thousand dollars for damages. So they paid twenty-six of it, we paid one thousand, little itemized, uh, cost, right there, what it cost.
And everything was taken care of, considering?
So they're going to take out all the, oh, insulation that was up there against the smoke damage, they're going to put in new insulation. Uh, they fixed the truck, uh, and the intermediate, so we should go from trust to trust. There's some framing there they had to replace, and the drywall, and of course, we're going to have to prime with a, a different primer since to clean up the smoke damage. Pretty well, I think the only thing we need to prove is the additional one thousand dollars deductible, uh, to pay for, to finish paying for the claim.
I make a motion that we, um, approve the one thousand dollar deductible.
Now second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the mortgage loan for the building, we just got that, uh, Jared should be probably getting a check any day now. Uh, the next few days, you should be getting a check from the bank, or it's probably done deposit.
He said it was for a deposit.
Yeah.
That day we signed the papers.
That was for two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Yeah, you seen it from the bank account, yeah, okay.
All right, I looked it.
So, that, that was the loan for the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the town hall, and we, we signed that paperwork the other day. We got Rose instructions pay application here for the progress they made on the building. It's been okayed by the architect, signed down here at the bottom, and approved, approved the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents. So we'll need a motion to approve that, fifty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents to be paid to Rose Construction.
I'll make a motion.
Now second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got. Water project, uh, that's what this little map here is. And the water project is due to start today, wasn't it, Kyle? And they did, you're going.
Sure did.
See, I think Kyle's got a, say you have a phone meeting tomorrow with Lori, Justin, and, and the guy was reading the sun, discussing what we're going to turn the water on, right? So we want to check that, I think that we paid that bill at the end of the month, but I don't, I don't remember when they actually take that reading, so make that part of that discussion, just in case I'm not there, Kyle. We, we'd like to start that service on the day they really meet us, you know what I mean? That way we ain't paying a, a partial bill for the month. So, and, can't remember, but it seemed like it should be around the first of the month.
Order, they send it at the same time they send it. I will.
That's, that's all I can remember from that agreement, I ain't got, I didn't have it in front of me, that, that honor before the end of the month, I think, was supposed to pay the bill. It may extend it in the middle of the month, but we just need to find out when they're going to read their meter.
Well, I don't read it the same year.
That's.
On the fourteenth?
That's good.
Fifteen?
So that would probably be next month then.
Well, that may be why they want to get going so quick.
But then, if we paid that, would we, you know, if they're going to charge us for a whole month?
Well, I mean, if they get it turned on like sixteenth or seventh, a day or two.
Right, right.
You know.
Two, three weeks.
Two or three weeks, yeah, I don't want to buy my own water.
Because this is the thirteenth now, so.
So, yeah, just make that part of the subject, and, and see why they extended this project south of Elm Street right there.
I will do that.
Okay.
Despite error.
I think so, I think so. But other than that, we ain't getting as many hydrants, uh, as I told you.
Um.
I only counted ten on the, yeah, I did too, so, might just make, make, make that part of your, kind of saying, all right. We have reading sun, pay application. You got a little bit of that, you guys get this, uh, please, and then break it up, let's just go into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, this is, this is the reading sun, by the way, this is the reading sun, this is the pay application for what they got until now, and should have certification page back here, in the back. Five dollars. Okay, good, 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 thank you.
Third, third place.
Yeah. And we see that the engineer signed it right there, and they okayed the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. So we need to have a motion to approve reading suns, pay app, this is, this pay app number four.
Yeah.
Yep, and two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
DR sprinkler credit, point five dash six, so I think you all made the decision at the last meeting to change this so that
customers who are wanting the credit will have to request it each year. And so I just simply revise the ordinance to be consistent with what you decided at your last meeting, and so it really was deleting a sentence. But that's what it does, and now if someone wants to take advantage of it, they have to, we had language under A one at the bottom, at the first page, that if they had a fight over before May first, if the first year, it would just roll over and renew, at the top of the next page, I put in bold, tie, application for subsequent years will not be required unless enriched in possession of the property damages, changes, um, that's what we had had before, that's what we have taken out.
I, I had, I had a, a question, and kind of a concern about it as well. What happened was, is that some, it threw it out of the system, and so Becky spent days going back through all these records, she had to pull tons of records, took a long time. And what happens is that if somebody comes, she puts it in, she has to manually go and mark that, that it has the sprinkler credit. So if, if something happens to our system, then we're talking about a lot of work, and so I thought it would be a good idea, and, and when she went through this, there was a lot of people that did not qualify for this sprinkler credit, so, and, and it adds up to a lot of money at the end of the day. I thought it would be a good idea that if you want your sprinkler credit, you come in every year and you sign up for it, and then she has to go into the system and manually put that letter, or whatever code that it is for that, for the year, and I think that would kind of, you know, that would take care of people moving in, or out, or, um, you know, or not using it anymore. So it would kind of just read that they have to come in every year by, by May the first, and we would just take out that whole section, starting with applications for subsequent years. years and just remove that. Is that okay with the council?
So, so you'll see in, in the operative section of the ordinance, we've got accordingly, we're just simply, you're striking that sin.
Just the bold, right after that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then it goes on to explain as a result of the NMR sprinkling credit, that's applied for by May 1st of each year beginning in 2026.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, would it need to, would it need to mention, Lee, anything else about doing this each year with, with that mindset, how that's gonna, so it's gonna start, it will start in 2026?
The way it will read is start at the bottom of page one.
Yeah.
"The current owner, Rockford Real Estate Service, has received an offer of sprinkling credits prior to May 1st of the calendar year for which the credit is sought. If application of the sprinkling credit is not made prior to May 1st, the credit will not apply until the following calendar year." And it stops right there.
Okay, so we could, um.
That's the end of that section.
Mm-hmm. So we, um, we can leave it just like that, or we could put May the first of each calendar year?
Well, it's had that.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's fine. And just strike that last portion of that.
Yep.
Well, um, I, I make a motion that we approve this, um, with the changes.
All right, all favor of ordinance 2025 dash six, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we did sell a town dump truck, a little thousand dollars. This was a, a truck, I think. Uh, we're gonna pick that, that new dump bed trailer. We got here is a little additional action plan that we are, was filed with IAM due to, uh, some complications we've had, a gin, overflow, uh, mostly resulting pretty much from the east side and a little bit on the south side here. Uh, so we submitted this plan pretty well to IAM. I think they're gonna accept this plan, at least that's my understanding of it so far.
Maybe they're.
Yeah, we just, we gotta send it in to make it official. So I'll have to sign a letter to send IAM, uh, this action plan, uh, to make it official. So other than that, you know, the council will make, uh, approve this action plan. It's, uh, basically what we have to do to satisfy violation. Uh, Kyle's working on what, what part we got to work on. It's gonna be, probably gonna have to do a little bit of a smoke tap and maybe some camera over here. We may still have a few cell phones hooked up and maybe some gutters still hooked into the system possibly. We get a lot of water in the system, so kind of what we did last time, but just a lot smaller scale here. So if I want to approve this, I'll sign the letter and we'll submit this to IAM.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Say. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We discussed a little matter in the executive session, and I could go ahead and take an action on that. The action will be, we're gonna terminate employment of Mr. Hayden Meyer from the DPW.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Anybody wanna make a motion to that second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you did, you did, Mr. Meyer. All right. Uh, you'll talk in court?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, meeting, um, on the 6th, and, um, we talked about, um, Days of Caring coming in to work in the park for two days. That's scheduled for October the 28th and 29th. They're gonna work on, um, a concrete slab. They're gonna move some dirt to, um, work on the hill. Uh, they're gonna remove the fence, roll the fence back and work on that hill where, over by where the tower's at. And they're gonna put millings on the path, and we checked with the engineers, make sure that was okay. So, cause we had applied for the DNR grant that's gonna pay that. There also, the league requested that they take out the concrete dugout. Um, so I believe they're gonna remove that as well. There, uh, if they need extra dirt, um, they're gonna have to request that, that we purchase more dirt. So hopefully we have enough.
We got some dirt up the gate.
We got plenty of dirt? Okay, okay. But there at the park, if they need, if they need more, you've got some?
Yeah.
Here or at the luggage? Okay, okay. And they're gonna have equipment those two days to, to do the work. Um, so, um, the DNR grant has been submitted, and we should hear something back on that in February. So hopefully, hopefully we get that.
They're gonna be taking out the batting cage too.
Yep, they are taking out the batting cage. Yep. It's gonna clean things up really nice there. Um, you guys might do that.
No, things are going, yeah, you can take that down.
We're gonna talk about that. Um, their next meeting at, uh, for the park board is gonna be November 3rd, 6:30 here in this room. That's all for the park.
Okay. Uh, let's do the minutes. The town council meeting on September 8th. Everybody read the minutes?
I have. Um, it, it mentions here, it talks about that Kevin Parks, um, wasn't able to attend the meeting. I was just gonna let everybody know that I did meet with Kevin Parks at the town hall. We discussed insurance. Um, he himself uses the, um, the, um, the government insurance, um, that you could sign up for each individual. We talked about that. He even offered that he would, um, help each of the employees to, to do that, and we would qualify for that. That could be good. Me and Joe kinda put numbers in, so like if everyone could go to, to their website and put your information in, we were just guessing. It looks like there are some good deals. You guys could, could give me some feedback on that. I also, um, have sent a message to AIM, who is, um, with the state of Indiana, and, um, I sent Sharon, I sent Sharon a form that we're gonna, we'll work together and try to get that form filled out this week. And once we get that, that's just an application, and we could get some, maybe some good prices with them. They look like they've got, um, lower deductibles, like you were requesting. Looks like the cost may be lower than what we're, what we're paying, so, um, that's what I'm doing. I'm trying to, um, I've talked with, um, one of our employees, and there's kind of an imbalance there with our employees, so some of our employees' insurance is lower. The town, the town pays 75%. So if one of the employees' insurance is $500, the town's paying 75% of $500, the employee has the other 25%. There may be another employee, and there's gonna be $2,000. Uh, so they're getting a, a larger benefit from the town, and we'd like to try to find a way to level that out. We've had some talks and stuff about that with Sharon in the office and trying to figure out how we can make sure all the employees of the town feel like they're getting an equal amount of these benefits. And I don't know, Lee, if you've had any of these situations with the other towns that you work with, if it's a big difference?
That in particular, it is. Uh, and, and it's, it almost becomes sort of a philosophical thing, the way you look at it. You want, there is disparity that you wanna try to equalize.
Mm-hmm.
But, but then there's also, that, that's how it works with all employers who provide insurance everywhere. You know, you, you may also have an employee who has significant claims against that insurance, and that may result in a, a, a lost history that increases the cost of the insurance of the employer that is spread across all of the employees because somebody had, you know, they, they had an accident or an illness that resulted in them burdening that insurance coverage more than another employee did. And, and so when I say philosophically, you, you can say, well, we're gonna figure out a way so that someone who has $2,000 cost of insurance and getting 75% of that pay, they're getting more of a benefit from the town that does work more in dollar value than somebody else. We wanna try to balance that. We wanna fix that. The other way, and it is, we have employees, and we pay them a salary, a compensation to do the job we have them to do. And in addition to that, we provide insurance, and that just is what it is. And it's not gonna be even and fair across the board. It's, it's the cost of providing that benefit and having that as an added curve that you hope will make Morgantown a more appealing place for someone to come to work, with the understanding that you, you can't balance that. You know, if somebody does have $100,000 worth of medical expenses insurable cost in a year, that will likely affect the cost of your insurance the next year. But you, you're, you're not gonna try to take, you're gonna, you're gonna reduce their salary because they had a bad year health loss. Well, you're probably not gonna do that. And it's really hard. But it, it's almost like you gotta decide, that is the nature of insurance for employees. It, it can't be balanced. Some are gonna benefit more than others because they may have a family and somebody else may not. They may have a lot of claims and somebody else might not. But we're gonna provide this, and however the costs work out is just how they work out. You know, uh, it gets really tedious and really challenging to try to balance it. It's, it's more doable with a handful of employees than it is with 500. So if you take that on and try to do it, you may be able to devise a way to do it with a half dozen employees working.
Yeah.
But I think large employers can begin to try to do that, right?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to try to.
Yeah. I appreciate that you're so interested in fairness.
Yeah.
It's, it's an admirable, uh, goal to take on. It's just hard.
Yeah, and it's, and it's kind of looked at with employees too, like, well, if, if this employee is getting this much, you know, that equals this much an hour, basically, in benefits. You know, so then they're like, well, I make this much, and of course, and it just, you start getting that comparing, like, I get it because they're fair.
There will always be disparity, there will.
We're, we're gonna look at ways maybe we could try to level that out. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into other places, and, but if that's how they, but as, as far as the places you represent.
I've not had any other family try to take this issue on.
Okay.
Acknowledge that it's true, right? Um, but not try to address it in a way that, that evens it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would like to.
I'd, I'd be interested to see what might be possible.
Another concern.
Oh, go ahead.
Another concern is just the cost.
Absolutely.
And the employees that we have, if we had employees that had families, all of them, then that would cost the town much more.
Absolutely.
And it is a concern because right now, two individuals out of the group that have children or a wife and children, and if we had everyone that had a family, the town would be paying up a considerable amount more in insurance payments.
Yeah. So that's why I was looking at, at the healthcare.gov, because, um, you know, usually the larger family is gonna get a bigger, a bigger tax credit, which could offset a lot of that cost for the town. And so, um, Kevin Parks was, you know, talking to me about that. He said, well, if you, if everyone would just kind of go on there and see what that would cost you, a lot of that, sometimes you don't even have a deductible. That's a big deal for families. So it's definitely something for Kyle to look at, and, and, and even if we don't get Mr. Parks to help us do that, if you look at it, you need help doing it, we could, but that's just another option. I am still gonna look into the same, but we're, now we're kind of pressing for time because we're in October, but we're gonna see what we can do.
Do I wanna make a motion to approve the minutes for September 8th, 2025?
Now make a motion.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got the minutes from the special meeting, September 30th.
I'll make a motion, we approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Clean dockets here. Uh, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the clean dock, dated 13th of October?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, pay rose next. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got it. Agressed affiliation dated 13th of October.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, we got the transfer funds, resolution 2025 dash eleven. This is just basically to balance out the book and bring it up to a zero or positive balance. I wanna make a motion to approve resolution 25 dash eleven.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Got, looks like one adjustment. No, we got two. Two, got it. The first one is Frankie Poe. Frankie had a leak, huh? Poe? Would they find you? No, no. He's barely, mama. It was under the female restroom. Um, it's like undiscoverable, and, uh, he's asking for a credit of $256.56.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve that. Now second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Andrew's dad. Andrew had two different leaks over on Middle Street. Do you happen to know anything about those cops? Is that where we keep having to fix that lane? What's the address there?
150 Middle.
Middle.
Oh, yes, I did know. It was in Charlotte.
Is that, is that right there?
It's, it's.
Oh, is that where it's at, on the side of AT&amp;T? That house sits back that over, right there? Okay.
But it was underground, that qualifies for.
Yeah, two different times underground. Like the credit, he's asking for a waste water credit of 647.73, and a water credit of $415.92, a total credit of 1,063.65.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll make a motion, we approve it, because it needs, it meets the ordinance.
Yes, it does.
And that's something.
We need to have the house.
Yeah, and that's something, I just, I want, I want the, everyone in the community, I want to make sure that they understand, because there has been some talk, and I, I know people get upset because we don't approve some of these, um, but we have an ordinance, and I've even asked if, if for any reason you don't think it's fair to come in and talk to us. to us, we're willing to look at it. The reason why we do not pay for leaks that go down the toilet is that everyone in town would be suffering that cost because we have to, we have to pay to treat the water to make it drinkable. And then we have to treat the water at the lagoons and it's very expensive. And, you know, I have properties and if someone, tenant didn't tell me that the toilet was leaking and ran my bill up $1,000, I don't expect my neighbors or anyone here, I don't expect you guys to pay for that. It's not fair. But if anybody, you know, if they want to come to the council and talk to us, we're willing to open that up and talk about that. But that's our ordinance and I know that there's some people that's really upset about it. I get it. But that's, we're trying to be fair for everyone. We're not making a rule for this one and forgiving this one and not this one. But I make a motion that we approve this, it meets the ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Over the last few weeks, started looking into an audio video recording system for the interview room at Town Hall. The law enforcement system, $50,000. Felt like that was a little high. We use it throughout here, pre-check, these departments, they use, got to give that a lot of things, saving money by more weight into their, this department or their Town Hall, wherever this room is, security camera system. So I had a suggestion to talk to Tom and Security Company out of Columbus. Joe and I met with them and walked through the Town Hall and made some suggestions on an audio video security system for the entire building to be capable of doing audio video recording system, specifically also in the interview room. This would also include making everything tied with the wire break and setting up racks and things like that in the mechanical room. Also some wiring to a house, television through other ways to get some information out of the Town Hall as well as some wireless internet options. You access around the building. They gave us a quote that was just shot out of $20,000, $20,000. They turned it away to break. They also got a quote, gave that quote actually to line wires, security alarm cell. We gave up the site and then. So, I know that security cameras, they talk about for the building. This is where they're at, just want to give this information to the council. So, you guys can start.
Yeah.
I got a question about that. Did they, did they mention whether that could be extended to the park?
So, the line wire system, I think would probably suit us a little better because the cameras are bought by just the digital license. So we can always add those on there if you're not willing to the number of channels your DVR has. So what he would explain is that anywhere has an internet access, he can actually hide those cameras to our maximum DVR.
Okay.
So, the water tap, that he'd have you as long as the service be able to add to the system.
And that probably tells you to set those cameras for the outside, the million dollar security for the building to, what it includes. And the $14,152, right about where our budget failed that day.
So there will be a 14 terabyte RRI point blanking, maybe switch for the rack, why, HDMI wireless adapters.
So do we, would we need to make a decision tonight? Like, would that be the best to make a decision now? Or is it something that?
Well, I'd say if we don't make a decision, I'm probably going to come back, maybe get a special meeting, debate, depends on how fast the project moves from what we're at now before the next meeting.
So this was the other, this was the other amount, so it's.
Talking.
Okay. Quite a bit less and it is within the budget that we are trying to stay within.
Yeah.
To get everything done. And you were, you were happy with them?
I give fire, being able to add as many cameras just by license as opposed to, you know, add, decide how big of, you know, I think they call channels. Maybe only have so many cameras. That, like, you know, they're, they're, you know, all of them honestly were, where it was also came the next day or day after, you know, they kind of decided.
I'm okay with that. If everyone out there.
Is that, if we do want to move this forward, maybe we could talk just after this about what you guys would want to set the budget at and also what, what you guys would want, you know, under, you know, video security act. At the Town Hall and then, you know, who would go that way. Or, you know, like, personally, like our evidence, you know, some of the security and then all the exterior of the building, close from the door, doorways from the inside.
I don't think, I mean, we need it, it is within the budget. We got two quotes.
Construction.
And they're moving along with the construction quickly, so I'm not sure what, you know, with the fire happening, I'm not sure what they're, when they're proposing to be done. Have you heard anything, Joe? When they might finish up because I know they were thinking it possibly sometime in November.
Yeah. And it was, it was hoping to be done early November, but I'm thinking it's going to be more like 12 years ago.
That's still soon. That's really soon. What do we need to do? Just make a motion to accept the 14,152.30?
Yeah, I can make it. Live wire.
Live wire.
Yeah. To approve live wire proposal, a quote for $14,152.30.
I'll make a motion, we do that. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, right?
Yeah, the Town Hall, that's the one. That is due for the position over there on the primary. You can have an issue with the top boss out and fix that. We've got an entry set.
Yeah, this is a plug that they stick down in the well there in case it overfill, rise the gun trigger, in case it don't send us the other one, it don't go off.
Actually, this isn't made.
It's, right.
It should have been in the water project.
Yeah, probably should have already been there.
So we don't have one at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We ever done that? Camera wire.
Sharon, how would that be paid for, out of water and wastewater?
Kind of down wastewater.
Just wastewater?
How much for that?
$3.37.
And, and what part is it?
It's the idle overflow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely one of those things that makes it, you know, part of the problem, God.
Well, if we.
What happened was the overflow happened, it poured and it wound up getting out of the system. So we don't want that happening.
Is this who you normally order that stuff through, Kyle? Erica Flack-Peter?
Um, change the girdle, she's law response, she's law master. Are we using, giving the covers? That doesn't allow the girdle.
Should we get another price? And if the other price is lower, we could just approve it tonight to approve that? If you get a lower bid?
Yeah.
And we go with the lowest one? I'll make a motion that we approve it with your calling and we accept the lowest.
Yes. Do you know Joe, what you're going to do?
I just, I like to have, I like to have two or three. It makes it nice because they've.
Well, we approve it with not to exceed $3,887.
That sounds good.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Also, we'd like to sell our small trailer.
What would you use that small trailer for? If we didn't, if we didn't sell it?
Use my first side, fair enough to the spot.
Would we be able to use our dump trailer in the place of it if you had to get that? And how much more did we need to be able to have enough money between the dump truck and if we sell that? How much more do we need to be able to pay for that?
So.
And what are you expecting out of the trailer?
We're going to put that on just a bit.
Yeah, two weeks and then it'll be on there. Just a little later, a month.
You might want to make a motion to sell the small trailer. We're going to be just a bit.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, come, we're pushing it on there.
Yeah, we, we managed it, it was from the marijuana day.
That's good. So you're thinking $3,000 or something?
Yeah, $3,000.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Those tanks.
Containment tanks?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the accident.
Right.
1750, each $20.
That ain't bad at all. That's $1,750 each. How big are those?
Not a big one.
They're double long tanks. That's what we got.
This was for a violation that we had, right? With the chemicals?
Yeah.
And we've got to have a contain, a container to contain this, these chemicals.
Yeah, these are, these are, got to put which, really you can't put what it's in now in a container. So you got to have a separate tank.
There's 72 by 72.
72 inches by 72, is it round or square? Square. Oh, it's square?
Yeah.
I'll tell you how many gallons that is?
Yeah. 825 gallons.
Eight?
825 gallons.
72, I'm at 17, it's 1650.
1650.
1650. So we get, we usually get like four of those chlorines a ton.
Yeah.
And they're what, 400 each? That's about 16, that'll hold like four up right there.
Well, they do pour that in there?
No, you put the tank inside that.
Oh, you do?
The tank leaks.
Right, it won't go out on the ground, yeah. I knew that, so I didn't know if we.
It has to be able to hold that and 20%. Ain't that right, Kyle?
So this what they, well, there's not many lagoons left in Indiana, but like, is this, is this common, what they do?
No. It doesn't make any sense, how many years, four years, go on five and four, five, six inspections. It's been the same since I've been here. It's the first time.
Well, we would use the tablet, we switch the label.
Right, but we still have tanks.
But. Yeah, now up here, the chlorine, up here, at one plant's got a separate containment tank.
Yeah.
Done. So I think that's the idea of the deal, is that if it's chlorine, it has to be a separate containment tank.
Yeah, we have to do diesel too.
So, and we got to cover it. And that's another part of the issue.
That's the other thing.
Right. So we're taking it to carport, one little metal carport, that's all you got to do to get it covered. It takes about $250.
Overdrive.
So Kyle, go try to find us one of those, just as deep as we can and we'll have to put that up.
Yes, the park. I don't know.
When do we have to have this for IDM to make, make them happy? Do you know, Kyle? Like, when we have to have all of this done?
Well, it's actually, it spreads out over quite a bit of time. That actually does. It goes into January, things here and then becomes a little bit beyond, so.
Is this it? Record this collection system?
No.
None of that? But it was on this report though, right? Some of this stuff. Just wondering how fast we have to do it because we have, we have to do it fast because some of this is like.
Because we're giving it to all this stuff actually.
Right.
In the shop, it's something perfect, we need diesel.
Yeah. Oh, you're going to pull them from down there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
How much more we going to have left over, Kyle?
No, we have 400 plus about $250.
400 plus $250. We used about 500 a month. You're going to use about 500 out of that? So we're going to be down to less than 400?
No, actually, we not, we haven't been able to discharge to the market board.
Right.
We haven't really used our leak, leak check. So we're going to take 400 plus. We haven't been able to use our leak, leak check, so we're going to take, uh, 400 plus
So, we could get away with one tank right now until next.
Try two, and get down each one. That white tank.
Okay.
Because then, we put the bleach, the diesel, away from the contact, make the building put it elsewhere, if you, if you get into the contact tank, you know, that's the way it happens. The extra tank we get, just move a little, out of the way, around those, the ten, ten is true.
Put, put the shelter away from that area, because they got to be covered.
Right.
Right. So, then we're going to put the tanks down there?
Uh, we're just going to put the two, uh, we're going to.
So.
Do that, we're not going to use it. Hold it all here.
Right. So the question is, are we going to have to cover both areas?
No.
Yeah, check with Kevin.
He didn't, uh, he said, you guys just remove these, it was our facility.
Yeah, check with you, make sure, because you know, they'll say that, and when you get down there for the inspection.
And it's important here, they talked about, we can, we'll contain it, just like by March of 2026, if I have everything taken care of.
Yep. Okay.
We won't wait on that till.
Well.
Soon as to the foreign season, it could wait that long.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the plan.
My capacity is three years.
Yeah, once you find out about that, and we just, we can at least put it off for next month.
Yeah.
I think we'll be all right with that. What, you got anything? Uh, the public got any comments? Anybody got anything, counsel?
No.
All right. Our next meeting is on November the 10th, 6 o'clock, right here.
Okay.
All right, please adjourn. Yep, we got that. Maybe we.
Forty, two and a half.
Four, maybe five.
Oh, yes.